This meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Independence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America with its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Long is excused. Commissioner Shepherd?
Here.
Chair Steinkie?
Here.
Commissioner Welsh?
Here.
All present.
Mike's on.
One excuse.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number four, public input. Input from citizens on matters concerning the City of Cape Coral's Community Redevelopment Agency. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on matters regarding the Community Redevelopment Agency? If you would, use the podium to your right. Please state your name, and you have three minutes. Ours are up here. I think the mic's on there. You might need to get closer to it.
Yes.
Can, but I don't think it's loud enough.
While you're waiting for that, can I make a recommendation? I'm not going to, not using this time. But since everything got set up late out there, there's still people trying to come in. And you're already doing the public. It's kind of, you should give them a chance to at least get in here, in case they have something they want to say.
Okay. Let's give about five minutes. Let some additional people come in, so they have the privilege of hearing your remarks as well.
Thank you.
Check, one, two, three.
All right. We'll begin citizens' input again. Anyone liking to speak on matters concerning the city's Community Redevelopment Agency, please come forward and use the microphone on your right, our left. Three minutes per individual. Please state your name. There you go. The device there, right on the deck.
You hiding it?
There you go.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Basically, Joe Kill, 20-year resident of the Cape. Is that feedback, or are we okay? Sounded like I get a little feedback. But my points today are with respect to both of the agenda items. Basically, I hope that we're looking at highest best use. I know it's a little premature to discuss what you're looking at there. Just a couple of key points. We stubbed our toes a few times now, not having resident involvement and a key interest group to give input on it from the very beginning. Please, let's do that the correct way this time. Let's get resident involvement, some key players, some key interest players involved early on in the game, right from the get-go, even before we start looking at highest best interest. Form that group, have them participate in a fully transparent manner. I think it's going to go a long way in doing whatever we do and building that resident trust. The other thing is that I think that green space is very precious here. And although I'm a proactive business person, the golf course is something that we looked at many years ago, and we were reserving that for green space at the time, although the price is very high at that time. It's a lot lower this time. It's a little bit over what market rate is that we're paying for it. I'd like to understand what that is. But basically, let's make sure the residents are involved from day one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good afternoon, Council. First of all, I want to say that the purchase-
State your name.
My name is Charlie Pease, District Five.
Thank you.
I want to say that the purchase of the historical Cape Coral Country Club property is historical, and I commend you on that effort, with the caveat that we need to make sure that we keep the interior of that Parks and Recreation land as Parks and Recreation land use. I do believe that we can do something truly great for our community on that property with all kinds of activities and options with bike trails, botanical gardens, and so on on the interior. On the exterior, where the historical clubhouse was, where it was torn down, I think we can partner with the right partners and do things that would bring great value to the community. I see it almost as wrapping around that small pond there that was the driving range after they redid it in 2002, and doing your waltzing waters and all the nods to Cape Coral history with restaurants and, you know, different shops. It might be like the ground floor of Cape Harbor, or something like in Punta Gorda, where you have Fisherman's Village type thing. This could be the project for our city. It is our central park, and I want to say thank you for helping us get that moving. And I think that's legacy work for each and every one of you. The next thing I have, just as a question today, related to the purchase of the Bimini East property, and really it's just for the edification of the public and for myself. I would hope that y'all are going to have a public discussion about the pros and cons of why you feel that we benefit from purchasing this as a city. Of course, the CRA involvement is important. But please have a public conversation here about why you believe that the free market shouldn't take this over, and develop it, because that's something that I think many of us are interested in hearing your thoughts with public discussions. So that's my ask, is that today you guys take an opportunity to talk about why you think that this is the best approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, citizens' input is now closed. Are there any comments from any of the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five, our business, 5A. CRA Resolution 9-24, the approval of the interlocal agreement between the City of Cape Coral and the CRA relating to the CRA's participation in the city's purchase of property in the eastern portion of the CRA's Bimini Basin District. I'll turn the floor over to our Executive Director, Mr. Ilchison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do intend on explaining the process that is behind the resolution that's before you today. We have had discussions about that individually, and had had discussions about the CRA redevelopment plan in our CRA meetings, but let's talk about the action and the request before you today. So the request before the CRA Board today is to provide the financial mechanism to fund the purchase of the Bimini East properties. It is not the CRA's intent to buy and hold this property. The purpose of a CRA is to be a catalyst for redevelopment. And by being a catalyst, what that means is something is put into an equation to spur a reaction, and once that reaction is done, what went into it comes back out unused. And that is exactly what we are seeking to do as the CRA and as your Executive Director. We are seeking to go into this property that has been assembled by an individual and his family over several decades, purchase the properties that have been amassed, raise the structures that are there, assemble them into a one large parcel, vacate the roads, get access to the additional square footage that the private sector right now could not get access to because they're a public right-of-way, then turn around and put that piece of property back out on the market for the free market, for the private developers to acquire and turn around and develop a much larger, bigger, better development than what we see today. If we use Bimini West as an example, we, and being a hundred to $110 million project, Bimini East has the potential to be over a quarter billion dollar private sector investment compared to what we're looking at today, which is only tens of millions of dollars. And so what happens is, when the new developer takes over the property, we don't have anybody in mind or lined up to buy it. That will be a public process in order to identify the best project that fits our community's needs, but we do intend on going that route. When that project becomes taxable, all of the additional taxable revenue above today's assessed value and the new value that is generated from the new project comes back into the CRA to further reinvestment and redevelopment in the CRA. So the goal here is to be a catalyst by putting forward the money to get this kick-started, to get it in a position that the private sector can utilize. When I took this role over a year ago, one of the things that I immediately began to do was to call and speak with developers who are developing in not only Cape Coral, but Lee County and outside of Lee County. And I would ask them questions, and these were lengthy phone calls, 45 minutes to over an hour. What are the barriers to entry in the South Cape? What are the barriers to entry to make a development successful in South Cape? And the things that I was pointing to were Bimini West and the Cove. Both of those properties were unimproved vacant land, and therefore, the cost of acquisition, the cost of entry worked when they were penciling out the cost to deliver a unit or a square foot of commercial real estate. When you have to go in and buy properties that have buildings on them, somebody has to eat the cost or absorb the cost of that demolition, the loss of value. And trying to pencil that in to a redevelopment, when you're looking at putting money next to unimproved properties, didn't work. And that's why Bimini West and the Cove were successful. That is why L&amp;L on Pon Island Road is successful. They are going into raw land. The owner of the property was a willing seller. He's been looking to sell. No developer would pay him what the property is worth today. They cannot absorb the cost of the demolition. The CRA is the entity that the state has created, the legislature, and that we have adopted with the county to be the perfect example, to be the catalyst, to go in, absorb the cost of the demo, turn around and sell the property for redevelopment, get that TIF money, and pay off the debt service on the demolition. That's what I'm asking you to approve today, is to put the financial backing of our TIF money behind being the catalyst to spur a wonderful development that will come in the CRA that will be a counterpart or will be conducive to the vision of creating an urban downtown district. It will work with and alongside Bimini. It will work alongside Madison Square. It will work with and alongside the Cove. And all of that starts to create a gravity for other developers to come into the CRA and for us to begin to continue working on generating more TIF to be more successful and partner with developers. The next item, which is the golf course, is fully intended, and I'll get into that, to be a green space for all of the people that we intend on living, working, and playing in the CRA, where they go to walk their dog, where they go to ride their bike, where they go to recreate. We need a place for all of what we're planning in the South Cape to be, and so both of these purchases today work in tandem to generate the vision we have for the CRA. Thank you.
So initially, what we're looking for then is a motion to approve Resolution 9-24. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Welsh?
Yeah, looking at the price tag on this, it seems pretty high. My question is, when, I didn't have a chance to call Dawn about this beforehand, but did we do an appraisal of the property as-is, or was the appraisal of the property as if it was just land?
No, we appraised all of the property that the owner owns that has a structure or have a structure on it. So what we specifically asked the appraiser to do was take all of the properties that they own, look at the ones that have a structure on it, give us a value of what those structures are worth, and a value of what the land will be absent the structure. So we have a total price for both structure and value of all the properties that have a building on it. There is an additional $5 million worth of property that the owner also has that is unimproved. We took the value that was appraised of the land without the structures, and it basically applied that across to all of the unimproved value. And so what you have is $35 million worth of structures on land and $5 million worth of land. Together, the two make the 40 million. It was fully appraised as-is, both land and building.
So I guess my question is, are we buying the structures and the land to just demolish the structure instead of just buying the land for the cost of the land, knowing that it's getting demolished? Like, is there an inflated price that we're paying for buildings that we're going to be tearing down?
We're paying fair market value.
Okay.
We're not paying any more than what, if one of these properties were to go out listing on MLS, we're paying exactly what would be paid for that property.
From what I understand, a lot of those properties too are uninhabitable, thanks to the hurricane and stuff as well. So I'm hoping that that was part of the appraised values. If you were to bring this building back to something that could be lived in, that much would have had to have been put into the structure in order to sell it for that price.
And we would, we'll most likely be paying more at that cost. There is a sale in here of one that was recently renovated, and it is more expensive than the others.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes, I see a couple of things here. It was timing. The hurricane was a horrible thing that happened to our community, but the damage it did to a lot of this property that we're buying, it's not occupied any longer. So the values have plummeted on a lot of them properties because of the damage, and the owner obviously didn't rehab them. So we get them for a lot less money. But the other part that I see is how many total acres is it, the property?
I want to say 18 acres?
18 acres? And it's a few streets, correct? A couple of city blocks, or?
So the streets cannot be purchased.
Okay.
But what happens when you have all the property on both sides, just like any other private sector developer or private entrepreneur, we will be able, as a CRA, to request of the city to vacate that public right-of-way, and that what now would become private right-of-way then reverts to an ownership, like a fee simple, that will, so that will generate approximately three and a half additional million dollars worth of land that is inaccessible at this point.
Okay. What I wanted to do is give a visual to people listening. If it's 18 acres, and say we didn't buy it, like you said, and a developer came along and only needed a third of it, well, he's not going to want to invest that money, with how you educated us already. But the other negative to investing that money is you have unoccupied, dilapidated buildings next to his brand-new project. So it wouldn't be advantageous for anybody to ever buy any of it and do anything. The odds of finding someone to buy the whole property would be pretty tough. So with the land being cleared, the city can, has multiple, yeah, multiple ways of developing it and involving more than one developer and things like that, more opportunities.
I just want to add one clarification, just for everybody that's listening. We do not intend to be the developer, nor holding the property. So we fully intend on putting it back out on the market for the price of the land for somebody to acquire and put together development.
We're just creating the path and making it advantageous for somebody to invest in the CRA. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hayden?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, as we look at, you kind of have to look at the CRA a little bit differently than you do the rest of the city. When they talk about redevelopment and the opportunities that presents in this area, this is a key piece of land where we can continue the stimulation of the downtown area. And to be able to do it in this way, Mike's right, and developer isn't going to spend the money to demolish the property. You know, we can do that, make that land now attractive for someone to come in and develop it, similar to the Cove, similar to Bimini West. So I think it continues the growth that we're seeing in a very popular area of our city. As far as the 175-acre golf course, it's really our last big piece of green space, an incredible momentous opportunity for us to be able to do something right, blank landscape, get public input, develop it as Parks and Recreation, develop it as Botanical Gardens. I don't really see it as a retail area, but, you know, possibly a community center of some kind down in that area. But what a great opportunity for the city that we've been after for probably 15 years. And, you know, I love the fact that we're finally in a place where we can purchase that property at a fair price. There were years when price for that land was way too high, but, you know, now we've got it at a reasonable price, and it will be priceless, I think, for this community as we move forward to develop it. So it's truly a big win for the city, and I certainly support both projects. Thanks, Chair.
I don't see any more lights on. Any final comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion to approve Resolution 9-24. It's been seconded. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Carr?
Aye.
Commissioner Cosden?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutter?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayden?
Aye.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Steinkie?
Aye.
Commissioner Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number 5B, CRA Resolution 10-24, the approval of the CRA's payment of $5,395.64 to the city in contribution to the city's purchase of the former Cape Coral Golf Club.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is asking for a one-time financial contribution from the CRA towards the acquisition of the property known as the former Golf Club. We have worked out a purchase and sale agreement with the current owners, and we are looking to have the CRA be a partner in the acquisition for the future and intended use of redeveloping in the South Cape, not particularly redeveloping on this site, but to support the redevelopment that is intended to be in the South Cape. Just some thoughts on this perspective. I will speak later in another meeting as the city manager, but from a CRA perspective, as I mentioned before, with all of the development that we are looking at, Madison Square, the Cove, Bimini East, Bimini West, and any other developers that we're working with for developments in the South Cape, those residents and those businesses are going to need a place to go recreate, to go relax, to go read books. It would be the intent in the CRA's vision plan, as the CRA, to communicate with the city. It is intended, and our contribution is for future green space and to create a place for future recreation opportunities and parks uses. So with that, I would ask for your approval to support the city in its acquisition.
Thank you. And I will restate Resolution 10-24, commas and decimal points in the wrong spot. It is for $5,395,643. So with that being said, we would look for a motion to approve Resolution 10-24.
I did like your $5,300 amount, though.
If we could get it for that, then we'd all have to go home.
I'll make a motion to approve 10-24.
With the motion and a second, we'll open the floor for discussion.
Second.
Commissioner Shepherd?
This is tremendous for the city, not just the city, but the people that live in the neighborhood surrounding that. When that closed down many years ago, it kind of depressed the area. It belated that neighborhood, and we're going to lift that neighborhood back up. This is going to be a game changer for the neighborhood. It's also going to create a destination that will bring people to the downtown. So I would not be for putting retail there at all. I see, you know, botanical gardens, a lake park atmosphere with paths and just nature, and I think it's going to be a great asset to lord- and I think it's going to be a great asset to lure people to the downtown, and it's going to be a game changer for the people that live around it. And it's been something that's been on my mission for many, many years, even before I sat up here. So personally, I'm really excited about what's happening. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. This is a huge win for the city and for the residents of that area. It happens to be in my district. It's also a location, I've lived here long enough, I actually got to enjoy the location as a golf course, which a lot of people have not had that opportunity, and it was really nice. I still remember it. They had weddings there, it was a beautiful property. I'm looking forward to see where it ends up. I also believe that I look forward to the participation of the public in that area in particular. There's a lot of homes that abut that location. I also became familiar with the property as a code manager. A lot of issues there with code violations, problems with transient homeless camps, you name it. So all those things now, at least as the property owner, as the city and the CRA, we'll be able to address those issues more rapidly and, I think, in a better way to mitigate them until we do develop this in a way that has the best use for the public in a park-type environment. So very excited about it and happy to be on council to help with the approval of it. I have seen a lot of the ups and downs with it over the years, and I really look forward to seeing where it comes out on the other side. So I look forward to the vote, and thank you very much.
Commissioner Gunter?
Thank you very much, yeah. And I echo, along with what my other colleagues have said, this is a project that I think will be the central park of Cape Coral. I know this has been a mission for many years to acquire that property. I know back in two thousand and seventeen, when I was running for District Council member, met with several of the residents who had a concern, they didn't want to see that particular area commercialized, they didn't want to see more homes being built there. So I definitely think this will be a great opportunity for a city to expand our green space, have the mechanical gardens and a variety of, you know, a hundred and seventy-five acres. We can do a lot with that property and bring a lot of amenities to the residents of the community, positive amenities. So I'm glad that we finally see this come to fruition. I knew this was a goal for many people, many residents, and many of us that has either sat here or has sat here and that are now gone. So I'm glad to see it come to fruition, and I look forward, like Councilmember Carr, to see what the outcome may be two years down the road. So I look forward to this project.
Commissioner Cosden?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question about the amount that's being contributed by the CRA. What is the total price going to be that the city and the CRA will pay?
It's on the other council agenda, but it's like ten million, ten point four.
So this is about half of it?
Yeah.
And how did we arrive at that number?
So what I was looking to do in speaking with the city manager was split the cost. So...
And you got him to agree with you?
Yeah. So what I was looking at was, there is a small piece, the southern leg, that is intended to be like a stormwater treatment pond. Right now, a lot of the inlets in the South Cape, when the runoff comes off the roads, goes right into the inlet, right into the canal, we are looking at stormwater quality improvement. And so we do have a plan to make a, on that southern end, closest to the intense urban area, make a stormwater treatment pond where stormwater would flow into there, get some pre-treatment, and then eventually go into the canal. So we have a portion of the five or so million coming from the city that's going to come from stormwater. The balance is the general fund, and then the other half is coming from the CRA. So that was kind of how, that was how the city manager and I worked out the funding mechanism.
You did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Welsh?
Thank you. Like everyone had said, this is a momentous or a ability for the city and the CRA to be able to purchase this. You know, it's been talked about for years, so I'm very happy to be a part of it. One thing I want to bring out now, even though we're not anywhere near design, I do think that, like the gentleman who spoke, getting community involvement in early stages is great, but one thing that, with my talks recently with the firefighters, I know that that area is one of the, it's kind of not that it's underserved, but with the growth that we're seeing with Bimini West, potentially Bimini East and the Cove, and what's going on down there, I think when we start planning this and looking for the future, that we need to look into maybe putting a, like a substation for fire on that property, because as we grow into a downtown, we're going to need that. So I want my other commissioners to know that that is a priority of mine, is to look at emergency services and using some of that property for that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Mr. Executive Director?
I do think it, I mean, maybe I can do it after you all take the vote, but I do think it, you know, with everybody that's interested in this, it wouldn't hurt to spend a couple of minutes to talk about, it's unrelated to the vote, but everything else that the CRA board has been doing down there, like the, we're meeting improvements on Palm Tree, meeting improvements on Country Club, there's many projects to help revitalize and redevelop this entire area of the city. But I think it might be, it might be a good opportunity to mention all of those things that you all have been doing that have not been picked up by anybody, just in creating the market and the beautif, you know, redoing the area down there.
Would we like to do that before the vote? I can start off, certainly, you know, it's, we've said this before, that the, you know, the train never gets to come off the track. The train's always rolling down the track, and so all of the things that are done, there's a multifaceted decision-making that has to happen. One thing has to happen before the next, and oftentimes, you have to see what's coming on the horizon to take the actions that you need to do to be prepared for it. And certainly, as we, you know, see the growth of the South Cape and the, that the CRA is responsible for, and we think about things coming down the road in about three years, when we have extra lanes coming in and coming out of our South Cape area, and be prepared for that, and the traffic patterns, and looking at moving parking from Cape Coral Parkway to off-the-parkway areas, having different parking availability down there, dealing with trash differently. And so all of these are just pieces of the puzzle that are interwoven between many, many different meetings, many, many different entities. And so to see all of these pieces of the puzzle come together to, you know, to have our CRA service center that, you know, recently opened to serve those people that will be coming to the area, to take advantage of all of these enhancements and developments that are happening, they're all pieces of the puzzle. And so to make a lot of the decisions, oftentimes, in isolation, the decision might look a little odd, or there'd be questions of why in the world would you do that? In many cases, it's because it's part of a much bigger, much bigger puzzle and a much bigger effort and a vision for the future that I think is exemplified by, finally, this golf course coming to fruition. Moving here, you know, myself, coming here first in nineteen sixty-one and moving here for the first time as a young adult in seventy-seven, I remember the golf course as well, and I remember the yacht club as well. And as we look at the rejuvenation and the rebirth of many of these places, the vision of Cape Coral and, in our case, our CRA district is just amazing, and it's extremely exciting, and I'm happy to be a part of it all. Commissioner Shepard?
Yes, we've all been working on this for a very long time, and I want to talk a little bit about creating the path. You know, one of the things I wanted to make sure was that I protected your value and raised your value. To do that, you got to create a path to get there. We had to create a path to get the development downtown to even buy the golf course. So we all paid a price, along with all of you. You've all paid a price. We've invested in improving the infrastructure downtown so that it is even possible for this development to even happen. If the infrastructure wasn't done, you know, there's no path. It could not happen. The beautification of the medians, all that is going to be a game changer for your neighborhood. And we all did it together, everybody paid a price, but we're at the end game now, where all the results are coming, and I think it's going to be a terrific impact. I don't envision any retail or commercial being done on that property. It's going to be, it's going to be a beautiful park, probably a botanical gardens, and it's going to be a game changer, big game changer. I'm excited. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights on, we do have a motion on the table to approve CRA Resolution ten dash twenty-four. It has been seconded. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Carr?
Aye.
Commissioner Cosden?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunter?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayden?
Aye.
Commissioner Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Snikki?
Aye.
Commissioner Welsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item number six, it's time and place of next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency is scheduled for Wednesday, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, at nine AM in council chambers. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned.